Okay, Fulgham Public Works and Utilities. I hope on the line we have a consultant of cable matters, Sue Busky of the Busky Group. Sue, hang back if you can hear me.
Fine.
Fine. And I guess Jennifer, if you could add just a little bit more volume.
Okay, since the volume is as high as it goes, so if you could speak as much as possible, we would appreciate it.
Okay, I'm going to go.
Great, thank you. That was fantastic.
So it's a brief presentation, but I hope one that you will find informative of both the council as well as the remainder of staff and interested customers. It's about 10 slides long, so I don't think it's going to take very long, but I'm hoping that we'll have some opportunity to do this session at the end. But basically, why are we here? And this is a discussion about public education in government cable TV channels in the city of Port Angeles. This was actually something that started last year, right prior to the election that we had in the city, when one party contacted staff to request permission to air content on the cable access channel that's thought to be the city's. And since that time, two additional parties have requested permission to air content. And basically, it took some unveiling because of institutional memory loss when the cable franchise was originally executed in 2002. Obviously, there's been some changeover in staff, for example, three city clerks, okay? Two public works directors. I know at least in my position as deputy, there's been three deputies. And certainly, it took some time to go back to the historical record and evaluate and come back what we think is a vetted due diligence process. But basically, is Cable Channel 3 the city's cable access channel? Who has the authority to air content on Channel 3? And what content might be aired on the city's cable access channel? So I'd like to just first start out of the box by saying, you know, we've heard a lot about public education in government. In the language, this is called PEG, P-E-G. These are common definitions for this type of programming content that's available on the cable television. P is public access channels, okay? And this is non-commercial use by community orgs, civic groups, and the general public. The E is educational access. This is, once again, it's all non-commercial use, but educational institutions, their agencies, and their various political subdivisions. Similarly, G, government content, is non-commercial use by governments, their agencies and subdivisions as well. So just a little bit of history about Channel 3. Our findings are that it's a commercial use channel that was begun in the early 1980s by the franchisee. The original franchisee at the time was Northland Cable. And in 2002 was when Northland Cable, their franchise agreement, was taken over by WAVE, Rock Band. And from 2002 to 2007, local content was produced by an entity known as the Peninsula News Network for both of those cable franchisees. Part of the due diligence, I mean, you think, well, why didn't I think of this first? Okay, but I did a search for Peninsula News Network, and I did find that some thoughtful citizen had programmed or had written basically the obituary for that entity. You know, I guess assisted, I guess it was Great King and myself, Great King, our Power Resources Manager, myself, we contacted Dennis Bragg, who actually operated the Peninsula News Network for both Northland Cable and WAVE. And basically, it was a commercial arrangement that they had, that Peninsula News Network was funded by these franchisees, and when the funding ended, they had to cease production. I'd like to say that in all part of our findings is that Channel 3 is dedicated for WAVE's commercial use. It's located in their office. The last bit is absolutely no city-issue equipment is located at WAVE. Okay? There's nothing. And basically, if you review the content on Channel 3 currently, there's three slides that scroll, and under no circumstances do any of those slides make any attribution, okay, that Channel 3 is the property of the city of Port Angeles. So I'd like to have that be kind of just a first takeaway. And move on to really what is Channel 21? Because this is the city's stipulated EG channel, okay? And for interested parties, certainly you can contact me if you don't already have a copy, but there is the primary ordinance that governs this cable franchise access channel. It's ordinance number 3116, which was originally executed in 2002. But it makes the clear stipulation that's delineated actually here in Section 2.2. It's a dedicated channel for educational institution or governmental, non-commercial use in audio or video. There's absolutely no mention, okay, of P for public programming on this channel. And in the entire ordinance, there is no mention of P for public programming on the city's cable channel 21. The record is silent about programming public content on the city's channel 21, once again. As promulgated, okay, in 2002, it's an EG channel. Until about 2007, and this, once again, I'm fairly new to the community. I only moved here in 2008, okay? So this was before my time. But we were able to find out through interviews with the previous city clerk, okay? Once again, this is three city clerks ago. So once again, back up until around 2007, there was some educational content that was placed on Channel 21 that was from Peninsula College. And also primarily, and it's exclusively content now from the TBW, which is Broadcast Washington State Government Liberations. There was some city content posted, but this was mainly message scrolls that you see down scrolls at the bottom, like whether it was the most sorts of things, traffic closures, or those sorts of messages that would periodically appear. But certainly, no dedicated content produced by city government for publication, at least what we can find in the record. I'd also like to say that currently, the city does not now have TV broadcast equipment. That there was some equipment that was provided in 2002, for example, three VHS players, okay? And those were viewed in 2007 as being obsolete. I'm not quite sure when they were disposed of as being obsolete, they were surplus, but probably around 2007, 2008. I mean, iconic to what is obviously could be a production room, but there's absolutely no equipment there that is owned by the city. We're currently working with WAVE and our consultant to determine current technical requirements. I'd like to just stipulate, I was a radio, TV, motion picture production major my first two years at university, and I worked at a radio station for two years, okay? What we're trying to do is determine the technical requirements for broadcasting, should that be desired as an option. And I'd like to just lay out for council and interested members of our community that airing content is just not as simple as plugging in DVD or thumb drive, okay? And also that we do not have, maybe this isn't the best choice of words, but what I'm going to call a TV broadcast utility for now, we might find some different words for that later. But we're talking fundamentally, a new enterprise that currently we don't have. And with every new enterprise, and especially given the prioritization of council budget and the city's budget, we need to ensure that if it is indeed the will of council, okay, that such an enterprise be enabled and it is financially sustainable for the long run. And we've heard some excellent testimony during public comment that it's not insurmountable, but it's not something that, and we'll hear a bit about this, that we want to immediately rush forward as a solution. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Sue, and especially because she's our subject matter expert on all things related to cable franchise. Do you wish to make any clarifications or corrections on anything I said so far?
No, I don't.
Okay. So we're on the slide right now that is labeled Current Franchise Agreement, perhaps, Sue, at this time. You'd like to discuss the next couple of slides on behalf of staff making this presentation. And basically, just tell me when I should advance the slide to the next one.
Okay, that sounds accurate. Well, the current franchise right now that's in place, the one that was granted back in 2002, there is one EG channel, which is Channel 21, which is designated. And then there are an additional two channels that potentially name them, but there's basically a channel usage trigger for them. And also, there's three video feeds, or what we call live origination points, that were required of the franchisee in that agreement. One was a feed, live origination point from City Council Chamber, second from Peninsula College, and the third was an additional location to be designated by the city. So that's a couple of the obligations that were in the, that are in actually the current franchise agreement. In addition, WAVE was obligated under the franchise agreement to provide, at city request, up to four hours per week of staff, sorry, equipment valued at a total of $50,000. And also, there was a what's called a pay fee pass-through of five ten persons subscribers per month. And those were things that the city could trigger at a time that the city chose to trigger in order to support the operation of the access channel, the EG channel or whatever. There's additional language in the current franchise agreement right now, but I'm not going to go into it because it's really not, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, and the key things haven't already laid out. I think the important thing we need to look at right now, however, is the city is in the middle of a franchise renewal process. And if you go to the next slide, please, Phil.
There.
The renewal process is guided by federal law. And remember, this franchise, the one that's in place now, was granted in 2002, expires in 2017, okay? And the franchise agreement is essentially just as a basic premise. It's a land use agreement. The reason why there is a franchise agreement is because the cable operator will be using public property, whether it's wires on, whether they're underground or area. And in order to use that public property, they need to give permission of the city, which is responsible for overseeing that property and getting access to it. So at its core, a franchise renewal process is a landlord-tenant relationship, in which the city is the landlord for public property and the cable operator is the tenant. And when you negotiate a franchise agreement, you are also negotiating essentially what kind of rent that tenant is going to pay for the use of that property, which is of course a great value to the city, and the cable operator, since the cable operator will be able to use that property to generate revenue, and substantial revenue, I think Barry said. Now, the process that cities have to go through when the franchise comes up for renewal is that it's actually a process that takes 30 to 36 months to proceed through, and very specifically defined. When we're going through franchise renewal, one of the key things we need to remember as we approach the renewal process is that, think about how much change has occurred between 2002 and 2016 with regard to the technology that we use on a daily basis. We're, I mean, now we have a smartphone, we have an iPad, we have a desktop computer. So the whole world of technology and communication has changed dramatically since 2002. So when we approach the franchise renewal, and the reason why federal law lays it out to be almost a three-year process is because it really has to be a communications planning process. A typical franchise is 10 to 15 years long. So hypothetically, if the franchise that's in place now, which expires in 2017, is renewed under the terms and conditions for 10 to 15 years, we're talking about 2027 to the past 2030. We need to look at this franchise renewal process as a process where we are looking at what are the communications needs going to be of this community for the next 10 to 15 years? What kind of technology should be available to the city, to businesses, to the public, to civic and community groups, to churches, in order to reflect what is happening in the community and also bring valuable information from outside the community to it? So the renewal process breaks down into sort of three or four key aspects. And these are things that are underway right now, and that we're assisting the city in the process to fulfill. The first is a cable operator performance review. Now, a performance review, essentially, what we're looking at, has the cable operator completed the terms and conditions, fulfilled the terms and conditions that are in the existing franchise? We are assisting the city providing guidance in doing what is called a franchise PR to determine whether the franchise fee, which is required under the current franchise, which by the way, is 5% of gross TV revenue, not internet, not cellophane, just all we're able to do under law, having to be the right amount. We're also looking at some of the other key obligations in the franchise and assisting the city in making a determination whether WAVE complies with franchise. The second front-tennis process, or what they might call the due diligence part of renewal process, is what's called a needs assessment. This is the part which is still looking forward part. What are the future community cable-related needs and interests? And so in order to gather that public input, a number of activities are underway. There are serious community focus group meetings, which were held several months ago. And at those focus group meetings, people had a chance to come and get an idea of what's happening with renewal underway at other places, what the procedures are for the city, and to talk about their vision for the future. We handed out a paper survey at that, at those focus groups. But also, we opened an online survey, which remains open today, and which will remain open until the end of May. And so we're going, taking the information that has come in through a variety of means, focus groups, the series of focus groups, the public input from the, et cetera. And we take that information, and we take a look at what the, where does the public want to go with the cable franchise agreement in the future? What kind of customer service spend? What kind of public education and or government access? In other words, community channels, and is the community interested in what's called a community media center, which is something that we'll talk a little bit about more in a few moments. Point is, that information, the compliance review, the needs assessment, creates under federal law a legal foundation for what you go to the negotiating table with when you sit down to negotiate the renewal franchise. Now, at this point in time, we are close to done with preparing the needs assessment compliance review. It is a few months, and still we'll address that now in a few moments. It is absolutely critical that we, the city, base its negotiation of anything in the new franchise on the key findings that come out of the compliance review and the public input process. By the way, one other key thing that we do as part of both the compliance review and the needs assessment is that we take a look at what are the current resources in place for public education and government access. In some communities, there's quite a lot of resources available at this point in time. In other communities, there's little to none, okay? But it's important to understand where we're at today with resources in order to know where we need to go in the future based on public input. So as we look at the franchise renewal process, our next step after compliance review and needs assessment will be to proceed with negotiating a renewal franchise from WAVE. Now, we can't reach agreements or negotiations, then we move into a much more legal process, which is called the formal process. I won't dive into that tonight, but we can answer questions and both have the questions about the process. The key with your renewal is not to make pre-suit anything until you're through with public input process, through compliance review, through sit-down, look at that public input, determine what the next step is, and then proceed with the negotiation. So I'll leave it at there for now, and Phil, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Sue. So we heard a bit about the renewal process, and especially about the need to proceed with these renewal negotiations in a logical fashion, once again, that build upon the blocks of this community needs assessment and the compliance review. As Sue mentioned, we're hoping to get a minimum number, I believe it was 500, responses to our community needs assessment. And despite the help of many people trying to get customers to respond to that, we still haven't reached that goal, so we're determined to continue to keep that needs assessment survey open until the end of the month. We're hoping to wrap that up at the end of May, and then score the results and also complete the compliance review in a manner that we can report back to council on the findings of both of those items sometime in the July to August window. Once again, somewhat predicated, my personal goal is to establish two-year rates for utilities. And that's my mission, that's my job, one, to fulfill my obligation to my management as well as to council and the rate mayers, to have. But we'll work this into our schedules. We hope to bring it back once again to council. And in late summer, to begin, to actually begin the long negotiating process. And once again, it was set, scheduled to begin the process this year, 2015, even though theoretically we've got or had more than two years from the beginning of our process last fall. But we're hoping to come back and brief council and get some direction from council. And use that consistently, as well as those items identified in the needs assessment and compliance review, to actually execute a franchise agreement prior to its expiry on pre-May of 2017. So sometime before April of 2017, we hope to have this wrapped up, but once again, at least under our current schedule, this is about a two-and-a-half-year process as we started November of '14. So conclusions. Channel 3 programming, once again, Channel 3 is owned and is controlled solely by WAVE. Questions regarding Channel 3 content should be addressed by WAVE, and WAVE at one time because of changes in their own organization, okay? Mistakenly thought they needed the city's permission to air content, and no, they don't. Channel 21, well, we're evaluating the business and technical requirements to air E and G content. And once again, given the results of the community needs assessment and the compliance review and direction from council, we'll be coming back to see. Later in the summer, we'll evaluate what our options are for going forward with any type of programming of E and G content on Channel 21. But most importantly, consistent with council's direction and as identified in the needs assessment and compliance review, proceed with those franchise renewal negotiations. Once again, with the idea that this is a long-run process. Nothing good happens in the short run with these kinds of deals. We've got to maintain the long-run perspective and go through the process as promulgated under federal law, and also the business negotiations that will be part of the difference between the franchisee and the city over the next two years, to once again, get us back to having a renewal of this valuable franchise agreement and a decision of whether or not to continue to have a cable access channel programming on Channel 21. So at this point, discussion or perhaps questions from council, Councilman Collins, I believe, had his hand first.
How do people access the community needs assessment?
What's the current number of the survey responses received to date?
How do you add a response?
At this point, you would go to a website, and it's a Survey Monkey. I don't have it, perhaps I should have had the URL to get right to Survey Monkey, but I believe that's.
It's on our website.
It's on the city's website.
Yeah, all you have to do is go to the city website, click on it, click on the survey, and you can fill it out right there.
Okay, thank you.
And it takes about 10 minutes. I mean, it's not exhaustive. Councilman Williams.
Okay, so our current ordinance does not allow P, right? So I was wondering, one, we need to fix that, modify our ordinance to allow.
If it's the will of council to air public programming, then that would be a determination of council. And I'm not going to speak for council's past, but it was relayed to me that there was severe concern about airing public content, and one of the reasons was there was at the time, a creature out of Tacoma that was on a public content that performed his services in the nude. And these are the types of decisions that council will have to take under consideration prior to its consideration of airing content. And I'm not an attorney, and I've heard all kinds of lurid stories, and if this is something that we've.
Yeah, it's an ordinance developed by city councils, and city councils can make a determination of how long to run as those assess in public comment. A lot of these public channels are run by nonprofit organizations, and splitting the city from public channel, where the government is then, if there is a pure government channel, it's overseen by the city, but public channels are split off and overseen by executive board in the end of the city.
Well, I guess.
If I might, also, I think it's fair to say that there are any one of the number of communities across the United States, including in Washington State, both large and small, that have these community channels. There have been, and they're very successfully managed, so I think as you move forward, whatever your decision is, I think it needs to be made based upon public input and up-to-date and accurate information.
Well, I guess, I don't, thank you. One of the things that we have, is we have current agreements right now, but we are not meeting that current agreement, we're not using that current agreement, well, at all. And I don't think that the folks here want to wait until 2017 before we have a new agreement to even start that. And part of the thing that I think is really important for us to know is that we could use what we currently have in our agreement almost to test things out. We may find out that the public's not really interested in this. Or we may find out that we have 100 people out there really wanting to put programming and things like that, and therefore, for our future agreement, we may get valuable information by putting what we currently have into practice. So I do not want us to wait till 2017 before we move forward. And so, and that's, I guess, just me speaking for myself, but I really think that we should have a discussion about this. We currently have 60,000, and I guess there's a couple of things that you said, there's a couple of channels that would be triggered by the council, by the city, so we would just have to ask for?
This would be subject to, not only would we have filled up the bucket that is allocated to us for content on Channel 21, but we have additional content, and there's a certain threshold for a number of unique subscribers. So essentially, we've got to use Channel 21, we've got to have sufficient content on Channel 21, and then it has to be demonstrated that there's sufficient subscribership to warrant the triggering of a second channel, and then the triggering of a third channel.
Right. But I would feel like for our future franchise agreement, we're not going to have a clue on this until we open it now to see whether we can even fill that, right? I mean, I'm thinking that if we wait till 2017, well, then we might have actually needed five channels or 10 channels versus for none. I really don't know what the.
I mean, the whole stretch in 2017, I think the key issue of the process is the needs assessment, which we're trying to wrap up as soon as possible, because that's really going to drive what the public wants. Do they want, I mean, is it overwhelmingly a public access channel? Is it overwhelmingly a government channel? Is it overwhelmingly an education channel? So assuming the needs assessment will close in May, we'll audit the results in June and come back to council in July saying, this is what the public's asking for. And that will be a good marker of where we need to go and how we get there.
Right, but I mean, you're talking about the future franchise agreement. I'm talking about, we currently have one, and ours does not expire until 2017. So does that mean that we do nothing until 2017 about our public channel?
Maybe I can help clarify it. And we have a consultant on the line, too. She can correct my assumptions. But no, we're actually talking about, I believe what Director Fulton was talking about, was that interim before we actually end up the new franchise agreement. I believe it is the consultant's recommendation that we at least go through, since the tidiness what it is, and we haven't done anything for years with this issue, that we at least go through a needs assessment that's just about ready to close. We evaluate that, we bring the results back to council, and then we talk about, based on the fact that we have a community needs assessment, where we go from here during this period prior to the new cable TV franchise agreement. In other words, if we're going to spend money buying equipment, if we're going to spend the time and effort to put something together, all of the things that we need to put together, we do it based on kind of a methodology that makes sense because we have that community needs assessment already done. That is the recommendation. If the council doesn't want to do that, and they want staff to work on something prior to that time, we can do that. That's not what staff is proposing. The staff is proposing, based on, I believe, the consultant's recommendation, it just makes sense at this point in time to finish that. Ask the community, what do you want? And have that kind of drive. And have that kind of drive, the effort as we go forward, and that might even help when we work on negotiating, uh, the next cable TV franchise agreement. And I'll let Sue type up and maybe correct me or maybe back me or anything in between, but that was my, uh, that was my understanding of the, uh, direction.
Yeah, uh, let me, uh, sit in here for just a moment. Um, he's exactly right. I mean, we're, we're so close to done with this, the, the, the first part of the new daily society and needs assessment process. Um, you should have the, um, reports completed and the reports, what they'll look like, just so you know, well, first of all, we'll have them completed probably by the end of July, okay? And it's going to be, it'll document each thing we did, the public input that came in, all right? What the implications are of that, what are the key findings based on that public statement, and then what are the recommendations going forward? You're going to have a really nice body of data to work and information and public input to work from. And so by having that by the end of July, early August, we can come back to you and report to you what that is, and then how you want to proceed on the interim between now and the end of the franchise agreement will become, I think, a little bit, um, more crystallized and clear. I think the other thing to be aware of is that with regard to public education and government access, there's 40 years of, of experience and track record in communities around this country. So there's no need to sort of reinvent how we do it part, because if the community, if there's interest, we can determine based on your direction, how we can proceed on the interim, on the short term, during the current, the remainder of the current franchise, and then what we should be doing and working towards for the new franchise agreement. The thing that just needs to be really careful about is to make sure that whatever we do in the interim is not heard of on the long term where, where you want to go in the future. So it's sort of a step by step thing, but we're really close to having the needs assessment done now. And by the way, we're just about, just about 400 responses to the online surveys, so if anybody is in the, in the chambers tonight who hasn't completed it, I would strongly recommend going to the city website or, and, and recommending others to fill, because the more public input the better.
Right, well, I, I would agree that I think it's a really good idea to get that community assessment done. But the other, but we do have some things about this current franchise agreement that we haven't taken advantage of. And possibly by using the current one to either get the equipment, to work out the keys in our, you know, our ordinances, and, you know, we have what we need, uh, testing it up, by using what we currently have as a test pilot to see how well the community receives this, how much interest there is. I think we can't just sit on this and wait till the, uh, 2017, but I think, I said, let, I'm, I'm intent waiting till we get the community assessment, but after that, I would love the council to really take a really hard look and say, look, they agreed that they were going to give us this and that and the other, and we not taking advantage of it. Let's take advantage now, there's interest in the community, go ahead and have a, a channel, and let's see what the interest is. We might surprise ourselves by finding how much interest there is out there.
I mean, I have to correct, I mean...
All I was just going to say, I think there's not a disagreement here. I think once we have the needs assessment done and the cabinet report, then we can look at options for both what's happened in the next two years and then what our franchise issue might be. So, um, I think that it's totally appropriate to revisit this issue, uh, after the report the end of July.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Brooke. He touched on a couple of things that I'm thinking over here too. So the $60,000 in equipment, uh, Freddie described as cash beforehand, uh, what neither party talked about actually was what's been used of this $60,000. Can anyone report on that?
The simple answer is nothing has been used of that $60,000.
And that agreement was signed in 2002.
Two.
So we're, we're talking $60,000 in 2002 money, whatever that's worth. I'm, I'm afraid, I could go back to what Councilmember Brooks said, I'm, I'm afraid that if we don't get something for the set aside money, the $60,000 immediately, I think it's going to evaporate in, in an agreement in a future, this future franchise. So I'd like us to see, I'd like to see us, you know what, if we buy some equipment and set it in the back room, whatever, but I'd like to see us get this money, uh, $2,002, uh, again, $60,000, I'd like to see us live up to that part of the, uh, agreement that's set aside unless, you know, they, they want to come back and offer a scribble money or something like that, but I'm afraid again, it's going to evaporate.
Yeah, a couple of points, I agree with, um, Councilmember Collins, uh, we're very close to having this needs assessment completed. Um, and I think it's appropriate that we give a lot of thought to this, but I think that it's very appropriate that we wait the short print time to find out what that assessment brings back to us. I think it's a shame that if we have had the opportunity in our current, in our current franchise agreement for all these years and for some reason nothing had been done to take advantage of it, that's really a shame. And I think it would be nice to take advantage of whatever is in there provided that it does not at this late date set us in a bad position for the future negotiations. That'd be my only main concern.
Excuse me, sir? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'll refrain some comments here. The other thing that I, that I wanted to mention is that we have a really nice volunteer that's doing a good job on filming stuff. I think all of us have talked during campaign times before, we always want to do whatever we can to, um, increase, um, accountability and, uh, make sure everybody has a chance to hear what's going on and see what the, what the real story is with all the council meetings and things like that. So we do have an opportunity, a volunteer, there's nothing that prevents folks from uploading these, uh, videos to YouTube, it can be out in the public, perhaps the city could even help facilitate on our website, perhaps, uh, putting a URL so that the public could easily find your, your videos and, and, and see, uh, the videos that are out there. That'll also give us an opportunity to, to look at how many people are viewing them. You know, if we have them out there and, and there's a huge number of viewings, that's a good indication that it's something that the public really wants to take advantage of. So, I don't know, maybe there, maybe we could assist in that way without putting any of our, uh, franchise negotiations at, at any risk.
Clarification to both Sue, I guess, and to you. Do you feel that there's still a place, appropriate avenues for public content to provide to us, officially, the same issue?
Well, I'll defer, okay, um, to the city manager or perhaps the director of public works and utilities. I'm just a staff member making the presentation this evening to council.
What was that question again?
Do you believe there's still a place, now in the short run, adequate opportunities for the city residents to provide public comment?
Yeah, I'll take that, absolutely. Um, we, uh, we've done our best to push out, uh, this website. We've given, actually given, uh, uh, handouts for the council to distribute at Farmer's Market. We've put the links, I personally put the links, uh, on the ReMyLife4Angeles Facebook page, um, and asked for them to participate, about 700 members on that Facebook page. Uh, and, uh, also correcting them to, not only the link, but correcting them to our city website where they just been up on our website for about two months now. So you have, I'll give you those to, uh, for the public to, uh, put in their concerns and desires, absolutely.
So, if I may, I may actually go, uh, talk about how we may enhance that a little bit. We have two members of the media here today, and I would think that depending upon, uh, you know, the media, they might be able to help us get that past 100 or more, uh, responses back that can help validate the, uh, the community needs or assessment.
So with that said, I want to make sure there's clear understanding. This was not advertised as a home day, this was, I could, we're meeting tonight to gain that information internally, people, you know, consulting our staff. So there are, you know, I want to be less under city, but you're going to understand me, but I know there may be those that would have wished to have spoken on this matter tonight, but that was not the intent of this part of our agenda, but there are avenues for those to speak to the channels that you alluded to.
To the boss, Mr. Hannity, you can make the call if you want to. I would like to speak to this issue for a second. I've got a lot of study on it.
I think, I think you're listening to me carefully, I just didn't make a decision. Oh, boy.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
As you know, there will not be an opportunity tonight for those in the audience to speak on the matter. There remains a place, an opportunity to speak.
Everybody's here to be interested in it right now. If you just put your survey in the next utility available, you'll get a lot more feedback than you've ever gotten before.
Well, I'll...
You kept this, you kept this project out of sight for 20, for 15 years now, and nobody knows how to respond to it. If you tell them, they can do their own program, then they'll respond.
I understand that, I just wanted to make clear, none of you know I have any thoughts in person tonight. I know there may be others of you who would like to speak tonight. That was not publicized as a public hearing would be unfair for those of you who might have spoken to, I just think we have a process in place. Is still open, is that correct?
That's correct, do more weeks.
Okay, so all of you, any of you, including the Sues, can have ample opportunity to weigh in on this matter, it has all been... Okay. The questions, I wish I could say yes, fact of the matter is, this was not intended, but if other members of the council wish to express their differences, that's my judgment.
Mr. Governor, you know, we have, there's been forever written council rules and procedures, and you are best to follow those. And there's ample time at the beginning of every single council meeting for public testimony, and I believe we all look forward to that. And of all the public hearings, we have ample time for public testimony. Tonight was a good example, you wholeheartedly encouraged people to come forward. Now, nearly every...
And I'd add, and I'd add, there were those in the audience who did speak.
That's correct. So now nearly every single council meeting has information, um, formats, different things that we get reported on. If there is a precedent to start opening all those up for public debate and argumentative and exaggeration opportunities, I am not at all in favor of that. We have a procedure that works and I think we should stick with that.
All I'm trying to do is nice about this man is I possibly can't, I concur again, it's my judgment that we provide, we have and we continue to provide appropriate discussion and encourage each and all of you, panelists, as you say, to outside the chamber to, to use the vehicle that exists. We got how long do they have to do that? About two weeks, two weeks, yes, sir. They're all really closing the conference room or...
Well, you know, actually, now that you guys bring it up, I know that this, we have procedures like this, and I've always been a little comfortable because often the chance to get a lot of comments, although we don't have very many folks in the audience. And I, and I know you have a position, but sometimes questions come up to you when you're hearing a presentation, and I wish we could find a way to include the public in asking questions or even making statements after a presentation, because I know me, you know, I'm looking at this, it's like, ah, I'm getting, well, yes, I had time before, you know, but I just wanted this question now. And that question with people here might help us make a better decision. So I don't know how we can open this so that it's better, but I think we lose information by not opening it.
Every, every public service is going to say, and that happens, and that happens, yeah, something is not...
And so how do we fix that conclusion? Because I think we need to fix that conclusion, because people do get a chance to do that. And I know that, like I said, I may need more of this, but I really appreciate hearing questions, because it triggers me better thoughts. And I know that as a team, I feel like we would become a team and things come out better in team environments.
So, Councilmember, are you advocating that any time during our meeting, we can let people just barge up and start taking command from and adding some innuendos and somewhat of the various profanities? Uh, during our meeting, do you think that's a corrective way of...
I don't think that's an effective way of doing it, but, because I would hope that the public would not be there.
I would hope they wouldn't, but...
And so, and I know that it just takes one bad person to force the issue of not being allowed to let people speak.
Thank you.
And I know that that's, and I, and I would agree with you that if that happens, then it's not appropriate, and we've got to figure out some way of doing it. And I, um, I guess until proven otherwise, I, I always err on making, on the way of being more open. But that's, like I said, it's just me, and I understand that we have procedures and we follow the rules, but I could let this get a little more than...
Mr. Collins? Well, I, I think that we need to encourage people to speak at the appropriate times. When somebody wants to, you know, speak and disrupt the meeting, I think the proper course of action is to let them know that there will be another chance for them to speak on the issue that connects me and the board, if the council feels strongly about it, we can decide to have a public meeting. But I, I think that, I think it is difficult to run these meetings as it is, and I'm not trying to dissuade people from doing this in public comment, I think you just need to try to make sure that they understand they will have that opportunity.
It's not like we have turned these opportunities aside, and we haven't had them, we haven't processed. Dan, I've known Dan Keane well enough and Nathan and all of them, all of them have had the, nor is it, I've opened our policy. Dan, is that fair to say? You guys, you guys have people coming out all the time.
Well, you show me more once in a while, I guess, we open our policy.
So, I mean, I think there's ample opportunities, appropriate time, ways for the public to communicate with us. Again, this meeting tonight, this topic was intermission, of course, reception.
I, I'd also like to point out the Farmer's Market as well, as all of us have emails through city council, so if there's any interested parties that want to meet with us, I have never turned down, uh, a constituent. So there are other options. With settling here, there's sometimes I might get on the microphone and go after somebody, but I have to wait my turn, I just can't, you know, go after, I gotta wait, and then we're weird ones that went for office, so, you know, the first responses to us. I do appreciate the idea of an open town hall meeting, but in order for us to run an efficient meeting, we can't allow that as far as I'm concerned.
No, I understand. So Phil, Dan, any of you here, any further comments before we close the meeting?
No, sir, and just, you know, thank you for your patience and, um, you know, once again, we've got a process, we're going to follow the process and come back later in the summer. We're going back to council and get some direction and be able to move forward in a way that represents the best values of our community.
Hey.
I would like to introduce you to Pat Towne, who's...
All right, I guess we, well then, you are at the coast of our freedom, you're good.
Hi, Attorney Mayor. I do have just a couple of quick comments as far as action items that came out of tonight's meeting. Uh, one of the items is the letter of support regarding the franchise, so we'll make sure that we get that out. And, uh, the other items will be coming back to council once the community needs assessment is completed and report back to the board of council for further discussion.
Okay, there is one more thing.
I have one more thing. On the front of the podium here, there's one, it was over by Dan's seat, there's an email, excuse me, website address. We are in a stiff, horrible competition of the city, of Flagstaff, Arizona, to move on in competition and judge publicly by, as the, what the outside recreational opportunities, the best city in the United States, that through the outside magazine, uh, contest this current round, which is the, in the manner of the NCAA's TTV8. current round, which is the, in the name of the NCAA, it's been created eight. We are having three more days to go before we either move on or we are shut down. Is that right, sir?
That's correct.
So I would direct your attention, all of you that remain in the audience, to write that email to that website address. You may use every, you may have one vote per device in your house. And as I say, if you have four devices, you can, you have four votes. You know somebody, you know somebody, you know somebody. So I urge you to help us move on. So, you have to do that.
Vote and vote often.
So, we are then, we need to, what we have in general, we have an exact session for a commander to discuss potential litigation of the vehicle council, prepared approximately 10 minutes. Is that correct, Phil?
Uh, that's correct, and no action to follow.
So, we'll excuse you all, if you want them to come back in approximately 10 minutes. Otherwise, we give you my, appreciate your attendance.